Welcome back to another episode of Cape Town Today. I'm talking to City Council President and Ward Four Councillor Val Gilman. Val is going to review last year's council work and she's going to talk to us about what's coming up in 2023. Hi, Val.
Good morning. How are you, Heather?
Good, good. Let's just start out right away with, you know, how you had to hit the ground running last January of 2022.
Well, we certainly did because we had five new councillors. Two of them were returning councillors, Councillor Worley and Councillor Grow. However, they had been on the council quite a while ago. Councillor Gross was a school committee member for many, many years and very busy on the waterways board too as chair. So he knew a lot of the rules. But then we had two brand new councillors and that really had to hit the ground running. So our some of the initiatives last year were to make sure that we had enough governance meetings for them, for all of us to review what the purview is of the city councillor, what it states in the charter, our responsibilities, open meeting law, rules of procedures. So we had two Zoom meetings on that. And we had legal assistance. Yeah, it was kind of awkward because when you want to sit around and talk about governance, it's so much more comfortable to be in a room where you can look at people. So it's, it was a little bit of challenge, but we made it work. And then we also did a budget overview at one of our B and F meetings of what the new councillors should expect of the budget review process. And that was done by Kenny Costa and John Dunn, which was very helpful as well. But some of the, the challenges for new councillors is that when you just give a lot of information at a session, you don't really start to understand what it means until you are actually experiencing it from a just-in-time standpoint. So that has become a challenge from time to time. You know, the city clerk has to spend extra time with some of the councillors going over the differences of council orders versus a request to the mayor. And there are significant differences in those. One is part of what we legislate, which is a council order and our rules, our governance for, you know, our code of ordinances and zoning ordinances. And then requests to the mayor are things that are really outside of our purview. And there are things that we're just asking the mayor to look into for enforcement matters. So that was pretty big. And then we, we all approved our code of conduct, which was really helpful. So if we go astray and someone is not respectful to a colleague on a meeting or privately, we always ask for apologies and then it be done as specific and clearly as possible as soon as the event occurs. And we've tested that a few times and it seems to work.
Oh, good.
I'm treating people with dignity and respect, not just each other, but members of the public, city administration. And we took this template from MMA and from webinars that I had attended in sessions back in Boston when we were having real MMA meetings. So that was important. And then we did a new preamble for our introduction to meetings where we talk about the importance of treating each other fairly, whether they're of their race, status, social, economic status, gender, and that we wouldn't tolerate words that were not respectful to that. So that was kind of just setting up the, the dynamics of how we want to govern. And we hit the ground running right off at the beginning. I think you remember we had the zoning for the MBTA, Mass TOD guidelines and some of the amendments that came out of that were really not specific to that TOD. But they were amendments that we were trying to, that the planning board wanted to bring forth for, to increase housing stock. So there were some misunderstandings that what we were trying to do was something that was premature because the guidelines had not been codified yet. And what we were really doing is looking at some amendments that we could put in where we might be able to give some, some easier relaxation of by right matters for multifamily and some of the the different zones in Gloucester. And so we, we hit the ground running. We had five Zoom meetings for each ward.
Hold on one second, Val. I just want to see if I can say this in my own words, if I'm observing what you just said correctly. So from what I think I understand, the Planning Board had this set of amendments and that had been in the process for almost like over a year.
Yes.
opposing to increase housing stock. Entirely separate from that is the state's mandate, which is the MBTA overlay district. And it was coincidental that those two arrived on the agenda or in, arrived on your doorstep at the same time on our doorsteps, I should say metaphorically. Is it, was it just an accident that Gloucester was already working on these amendments? Totally separate from the state's mandate and the governor, they, they passed that law requiring municipalities close to MBTA stations to change their zoning.
In, in rather, yes, that is correct. You are, you are correct with that. But all of the things that the planning board were, were bringing forward were all covered in our housing production plan that we had in front of us. And the city council had approved that the planning board did. So not, nothing was new to what had been discussed for years in the housing production plan.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm just trying to say, yes, so that was an involved, long involved process that the city was already working on. And at the same time, the state passed this law, but they were separate and
Exactly. And the state's, state's law were only guidelines back then. They did not get finalized until August of last year.
Okay, all right.
And so they're coming back now and we're waiting for Greg Verger, our mayor.
Back up, let's back up. What happened to those amendments that?
Most of them were not approved by the council.
And do you want to discuss that a little bit more deeply?
Well, I, you know, I think from a process standpoint, we did a really good job during COVID to have five ward meetings via Zoom. And we had close to 300 people participate. So we saw a lot of new faces, which was great. We did a lot of listening and the council did, I think, a good job vetting each amendment. And you know, it was, I think it was a very collaborative process. And we did what we felt. Each, each councillor deliberated how they felt passionate. I mean, I had, I was passionate that I wasn't comfortable allowing buildings to be over 35 feet by right because I felt it was appropriate to have public hearings and listen to abutters and, and all of that. So, so that was a no for me. That's something that I heard firmly in my ward meetings and from my constituents and, and I stood tall on those, but everyone had some different opinions. And so I think it was, it was really hitting the ground running. It was a lot of work having all these ward meetings on Zoom. But I felt that we worked well together as a council, as a new councillor. I, I think new councillors held their ward meetings, Councillor O'Neill and Councillor Majota, and they held their own. And we partnered members of the city council with them that were seasoned to kind of be their note takers and stuff. And, and we worked really hard to reach out to the community. So I'm proud of us for that. It was controversial because there was a little bit of confusion with the guidelines and these other zoning amendments. So does that help at all?
Yeah, no, that does. So what, what, maybe you can't answer this, but I'll try to ask, what does it mean for the city that these amendments were not passed? What does it mean for a housing stock? What does it mean going forward?
So we realized that there's a shortage of available housing for folks that aren't extraordinarily wealthy, that maybe are within a range of, you know, like work, workforce housing, which is maybe, maybe they bring in 50 to 80, $90,000 a year. And the amount of stock that we have for them is basically nothing. And that's unfortunate because we really like to feel like people that went to Gloucester High might want to come back and live here after they get a degree or, you know, or they're, they're doing vocational work and, and they're able to start to consider a first home, but there's, there's just no housing stock. So we were trying to make it easier for them to come up with by right property that new constructions allowed, but folks that have an existing home were not given that same opportunity because we defeated those amendments. And that was one of the ones that I felt strongly about because I wanted to make our community affordable. And, and it was only compliant lots. So it wasn't like all lots would be where you want to do some reconstruction on your home, right? It was only the lots that that were compliant. So everything else would still have to go through the same process. But the by right was compliant lots and it wasn't a lot. And, but the, the the will of the committee was not to support that. So we're back to the drawing board where we don't have places for people to live. And it's unfortunate. And it's not, and, and I think, you know, we, we have the affordable housing, which is a little bit different than that because that's a different requirement and we're trying to get to the 10% threshold. And until we get there to our numbers, then we are like required to accept 40B housing and 40B housing doesn't give the city council any type of authority to get involved. It's basically things are pretty flexible for developers to come in. And, and we have a 40B right now and Maplewood Ave coming to the table with the zoning board of appeals and, and, you know, there's, there's no, there's no setbacks, for example. And that's, that's the stuff that you do if we're not showing that progress to get to the 10%. And that's disappointing. So we had a educational session and planning board and P and D the end of last year, just so people could understand what 40B meant. And Suzanne Egan did that, who's our corporate counsel, and she did a really nice job. So if anybody's ever interested in seeing that, you can go and watch. It was a good educational session. So a lot about zoning though, for sure.
All right. Do you want to talk about the MBTA district and the state's law regarding that?
Well, the only thing that I'd like to say right now is that Mayor Verger on by the end of January is to submit his action plan. And, and then what that basically says is that we are going to allow the planning board to start looking into what they recommend for the city council to consider, to be consistent with the guidelines. And so that will be coming, but we probably won't even be starting that until the middle of this upcoming year, this year. Because the planning board has to go back to the table. But the things that are, you know, most, most challenging that I'm feeling right now is that there, you know, I, I believe very passionately that we need to have facts on the table. And there are some misunderstandings that have been out there. And when we talk about amount of units that are required, people will say, we're going to have 2270 units and we're going to increase our population from 30,000 to 50,000 and we're going to have 11 halliards coming to town. And, and where really section 3A of the zoning act of August 2022 basically says that the minimum unit capacity is a measure of whether a multifamily zoning district is of reasonable size and it's not a requirement to produce housing units, nor as a housing production target. And that's where people have misunderstood. And so they're just looking like, oh my God, this is going to be totally overwhelming. And we just need to make sure that people get accurate news. And, and that's our goal and that's what we will try the best to do once again in planning and development.
So can I, let me see if I can say this in my way too. So what I think you just said is the zoning is required, but there is no requirement for a number of units?
Well, the, well, the number of units is what the state set based on a formula for density and what, and what, what our size requires.
Okay.
And they threw out those numbers. But the number is not a number that has to be met. It's the zoning that has to be allowable and it could take it, you know, it's, it's just way down the, the road. It's not, it's not anything that's going to happen overnight. When, when, when you have a group of people on a street, not everybody is going to take an opportunity to start building a third unit in their house, right? And then all the same rules still apply in terms of parking and, and all the zoning that we have in place. So there are rules, there are guidelines, and we just want to make our decisions based on facts. And that's what we have, that, that's what we will be dealing with next, this, this year now that we're in 2023. So does that help a little bit?
Yeah, that does. So there's also zoning around flooding. Want to talk about that? A new issue to address?
Sure. So right now, the planning board has brought forward some, it's a floodplain overlay district to replace lowlands in section 5.5 of the code. And we are going to be starting this process this upcoming Wednesday on the 18th of January at P and D. And we will hear the recommendations of the planning board. They recently had a public hearing. I think it was a week ago, maybe a week and a half ago. And now they're coming forward with this proposal for us. And basically it looks at property that's in the high velocity zones in the community. And I think the recent storm that we had with 60 mile an hour winds with a high tide that was huge was very concerning to a lot of people because there are a lot of properties around the coast that are completely flooded. And the planning board has come forward with some recommendations of restrictions and how much a current property that's already there would be allowed to add to their home. And, and then some restrictions in terms of not allowing new homes to be developed on a high velocity lot. And those are the things that we're going to be taking up. So my suggestions for people that might be interested would be to watch the most recent planning board meeting where they had a very, a pretty well-attended public hearing. And, and then follow it closely in planning development because we'll, we will be vetting it. We'll be discussing in all the meetings now for subcommittee, which I'm excited about, our true hybrid. So they can come join us at the Harbour Masters office on Wednesday, the 18th. Jason Grow chairs that subcommittee. I'm the second member as the vice chair and Tracy O'Neill is the third. So the public can come and sit in and listen in person, or they can zoom in and listen to us on Zoom. And the nice thing about Zoom is that if you miss it, you can watch it the next morning, which is great. So we want people to stay involved. And then when the public hearing occurs to be there, and if you can't be present, you can always write a letter of support or in opposition and be part of the process because this is important. But we all look, our, it is so frightening to see the amount of water that is coming up on our roads, on our properties, public, private, everywhere. And we need to be proactive. So we appreciate that the Cape Town Climate Coalition really has worked hard to look at all this and has worked with the planning board. And now the planning board is bringing this forward. So it's a group effort. And now it's at the city council level. So yeah.
I have one question. So where where does the map of the floodplain district come from? Where does, did that originate?
Well, it's all in MapGeo with NOAA and you can, you can see all that on the city website. And you, we will be discussing that at our meeting. So it's, it's pretty interesting. One of the neat things I loved is recently Gloucester High School students began looking at all of this. And they actually did. They, they each took a different part of the community and looked at what the rising tides were going to do over time and how to deal with this. And it was really neat to see our students who are 15, 17 years old trying to understand how this affects them and looking for the city council to help with some zoning. So again, it's a collaborative issue because everyone is concerned when they see so much water coming right over our land right now.
No, I ask that because it seems like this floodplain must have changed in the last 15 to 20 years. You know, it's not, it's a fluid situation.
It, it is. And, and it's just, and it's gradually happening.
Right, yeah. It's going to be a really interesting process. I think people will probably learn a lot at these meetings.
Yeah. I mean, you remember what happened on the back shore where a group of citizens worked together to save the shores, right? So there's, there's a lot of passion out there, you know, and it's also always a concern for public safety as well. If people keep choosing to build right on the water and then they completely get flooded, obviously they're dealing with high flood insurance. And sometimes in the inability to get flood insurance on those properties. But then it's, becomes a public safety issue. When people don't want to leave their property and they're completely flooded out, those are things that we don't want to have happen and we're concerned. And we're, and, and our planning board has done a lot of analysis and looking at other coastal communities and what they've done. And that's interesting too, because they're proactive and they're aware of what other some of the Cape, Cape Cod communities have been doing on this in terms of zoning. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I think, I think this is really helpful and it's really timing because that was not a very friendly storm that we had.
That was hard.
Yeah.
Let's jump away from zoning for a little bit. You had an interesting issue in your ward this past year, the taco truck.
You know, that was, that was so crazy. So a couple of our neighbors originally, when the taco truck arrived, he had a generator that several of the neighbors that lived on Linden Court felt was loud. And he went out and bought a different generator. And the different generator made, was tested by Bill Sanborn, our building inspector, and it was totally compliant with our noise violations. And so, but the neighbors that were concerned sent flyers around mo, most of Lanesville. And the reaction was probably 98% in favor of the taco truck because they really thought that his Ross's, you know, tacos were great. And, and so I started going to the beach a little bit more to just talk to people and I'd sit at shoreline and, and listen to a very quiet generator, have, you know, a taco or two and let people know, come talk to me about it. And people were really in support. So we decided in fairness, the neighbors that were concerned, let's, they wanted to have a meeting. And so with COVID, we said, let's have the meeting right at the beach. So bring your beach chairs. Some people bought, brought hors d'oeuvres. Sam Poole brought water for everybody and, and we even had a microphone. And when I, when I arrived, there were 125 people there, including six councillors, five additional councillors to me. And we led a very respectful meeting and but it wasn't easy because there are a lot of tempers and there were a lot of people that were really upset that they could possibly lose a taco truck. But the taco truck accepted a permit legally that was in our books. That location was in the books. It just wasn't a popular location in the past until this recent time. So we ended up having a great conversation, the dialogue and, and we tightened up the rules a little bit. Tony Gross and I put in a council order to tighten up the rules because we wanted to make sure that folks that were putting in bids for closed bids for the different locations in the community. We have six, but there's actually an opportunity for three more, for nine, that we wanted them to be legit. And we wanted requirements. So once you put in your bid, you would have to follow through with meeting that. So in other words, what we didn't want to do is have people that might be just blocking it by, by paying money and then not having a legitimate business. So we, we tightened up the language and made sure that we like small businesses and that's a small business. And people really got very comfortable with the grab and go philosophy during COVID. A lot of people just wanted to pick something up and then bring it to the beach to eat or bring it home. And so that business is here to stay. And it was a great process because people were respectful to each other and we went through a very strong democratic process.
That's wonderful. Well, before we run out of time, is there anything else you want to talk about either that happened last year, issues last year or in the upcoming year?
Sure. And I'll do just a, a quick overview of the three different subcommittees last year. Last year, we, our ONA, which is chaired by Sean Nolan, appointed 107 members to our boards and commissions. So that was huge. So Mayor Verger and Jill Cahill went to town to try to recruit new folks for all our boards and commissions. And so, so that was a very fluid process. And, and in ONA, they tackled some provisions for the surfers to give them a little bit more rights for Good Harbor Beach on cloudy days and a little bit of an extension of the current schedule because they had been respectful and worked closely with the lifeguards and the public works. And so that was kind of exciting. And, and then in, in budget and finance, we did a good job with our fiscal 23 budget. And one of the things that I'm asking to do for this year is, and this was one of my campaign commitments, is that we're going to be doing ward meetings this month and next month where we start to ask people, what are the things that you feel that the city needs more of? Do we need more people to oversee trees? Do we need more enforcement for street, feet on the streets for police officers? Do we want to consider a parks and recreation department or director? I know Mayor Verger has mentioned that that might be something that we could begin to think about. But what do the people want? What do our taxpayers want? And that way, at least there's a conversation that occurs before the department heads all start penning their budget. It's, it's, it's eliciting. My meeting is in, I'm having a meeting at Lanesville Community Centre for Ward Four on the 26th of January at 6 o'clock. And all of the ward councils had, have been asked to find a venue where we can be onsite with folks in our ward and start talking about this and whatever else they want to talk about. So people want to come and talk about the private road repair presentation that we had last week and the next step to that, which is another whole topic. We could, we could have a whole session on that, Heather. But, but I encourage people to watch last week's city council meeting because we had a presentation by the working group and we've put in some subsequent council orders where we might be able to, to better guide money for private road re, temporary repairs on roads that are highly used by, as a crossover street between two publics or going to a destination like Corliss Landing. And, and we're trying to, even though the And and we're trying to, even though the law in Massachusetts states that you cannot use public funds for private roads and they're all, in in most private roads are all abutted by deeded requirements, that there are still things that we can do more of. We can, we can definitely lobby for more money for our chapter ninety, which is huge because six hundred and eighty thousand a year is just not enough. So that's, that's, that's another um, matter. And um, so B and F, I think I highlighted that. And then planning and development, we certainly talked a lot about zoning. So um, so those are kind of the highlights right now. But you know, I, I, I think our council is excited because we're going to be getting back to Kairos shortly. We're hoping by the end of February, beginning of March. And so we'll be able to, excuse me?
Hybrid meetings.
Yes, true hybrid. So that means people can come to our beautiful auditorium and sit in the audience and participate in public comments and public hearings. And and we would all be there once again as counselors together in a room, which is so important to good democracy. And then um, but if people are excited about continuing with Zoom, that they can zoom in and also participate in those same two, two things. So so I think that that's really important. That's one of the few silver linings about COVID is Zoom is here to stay and we can get the best of both worlds. And I'm excited about that. And we're doing that now, like I said, at the Harbor Masters office with our standing committee. And we were the first board and commission in Gloucester to be able to get there for true hybrid meetings. And thank you to Ryan Knowles and city administration. So there's a lot going on, Heather. We're busy. It's, it's exciting. It also is election year, which is, will be another distraction. I wish the term limits were longer for the mayor. I wish the term limits were longer for city council and school committee. Two years is is pretty quick.
Yeah.
But um, that has to be done in the city charter. So we're not there yet. Yeah. And of course, we're, we're excited about the four hundredth too. I mean, there are so many cool events coming up and and we're going to continue to try to share everything and do whatever we can to help Ruth Pino and Bob Gillis and Bruce Toby in that whole leadership group to make sure that we can really just maximize what an exciting year this is. So.
I saw the ball drop. Did you see the ball drop?
I saw it on video. I, I was not here, um, but um, but it, it was, it was really cool. I loved seeing the in excitement at City Hall. That was really awesome.
It was a rainy jury night, so it was um, it was really fun to see people turned out for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, come back and let's talk about the private road repair issues because I think there is so much there and we have not covered that.
Okay.
And anything else you want to talk about?
So one of the biggest components of the private road repair is that a lot of people don't really understand that if they're in a private road, the law in Massachusetts states that you can't use public funds for private road repair. But but we have a, but but there are provisions, like for example, in nineteen forties for plowing, the city council back in the nineteen forties voted to allow the majority of private roads to be plowed. And that's a public safety issue.
Right.
Um, so anyway, so so we um, we work together, our, our working group that Greg Verger had approved. I fortunately was on it as one member. And um, we came up with some recommendations to see um, what we might be able to do better. And there's just, it's, it's a whole, it's, it's, it's really frustrating, Heather, because we just don't get enough money in chapter ninety for public road repairs. Mike Hale very clearly has always told us, there's only enough money, six hundred and eighty grand a year is all we get for public road repairs. And and it's so little, it's like two little roads or three little roads. And and so we need to double that at least in terms of chapter ninety. So our group wants to do more lobbying because we are not unique. All three hundred and fifty-one, however, many municipalities in Massachusetts are struggling with the same thing. We're not getting enough money. And so we thought that maybe we could do a resolution and try to pitch it to Bruce and Margaret, who totally understand our issues because they listen so beautifully to all of our local issues, which we really appreciate. But that we give Mara Healy, our new governor, um, an opportunity to weigh in because she's been talking a lot about infrastructure. And Mike Hale is actually going to be on the panel at the MMA meeting next week. And I'll be attending that in Boston. He's on a panel for private road repairs for MMA.
I'm going to lose you. We're going to, our Zoom is about to end. We have to say goodbye. But uh, let's continue this thought. Let's hear more about that. That's so exciting about Mike Hale. And thank you so much, Val Gilton, City Council President, for um, just helping us understand more today.
I always enjoy talking with you, Heather. Thank you. You always ask great questions and I love what you do. So thank you so much.
Love you back.
All right. Take care. Bye.
Interested in a sponsorship? Email sponsor at sixteen twenty-three studios dot org to learn more.